Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Franklin Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, November 11th, 2025. Meeting has been properly posted. Could we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Mrs. Yang?
Here.
Mrs. Wackowski?
Here.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Dr. Khan?
Yeah.
And I'm present, and Mrs. Larson is excused.
Thank you. And can we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Wackowski, seconded by Dr. Khan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Friends of Franklin recognition. Vicki Cordani, please.
Get her the microphones.
Hello. On behalf of the Franklin Educational Foundation, we would like to recognize Ryan and Ellie Sopa from Urban Heating and Cooling. For the past couple of years, they have been an amazing business partner and community partner for the entire community, not just our school district, but all of Franklin. Anywhere I look, I feel it's either them supporting some nonprofit in this location or a student in this location, and it really hit home when Ellie reaches out and asks, like, what can we do for the teachers? How can we support the teachers even more than we're already doing? So this is just a little recognition for Urban Heating and Cooling, and just thank you so much for your service and support of the community.
Thank you.
Will you come up first? Picture? Sure.
I figured it all bore last time, right? That was nice.
Okay. If there was a furnace right here, you'd be all about it. This is not his normal work schedule.
We're all just...
Ryan, you only have half an hour.
I just said yes, and had speech to give.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it so much.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate you.
Yes, I know. I was gonna say, we've messaged. Thank you so much. Anything we can do to help, let us know.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to community comment. I didn't see anybody sign up for community comment, but I see somebody does want to comment.
Comment?
Yes. Does anybody else wish to sign up or comment? All right. Yeah, so three minutes, please.
All right.
Please state your name for the record and your address.
My name is Todd Agar, 7851 West Lake Point Drive. This is really cool. I've never been to a board meeting before.
It's okay.
It's very official.
We don't fight.
Is there someone that takes notes or minutes or something on record?
The meeting is recorded as well.
Oh, okay, good. I just wanted to go in record that my name's Todd Agar, and I do not hate Disney World. It's an important fact. You'll see soon why. I also like the Fourth of July. Good evening. This is when I start now. I'm like, good evening, thank you for your time. I wanted to start with a tough two-part question for the board. One, have you been to Disney World? And two, how awesome was it? Pretty awesome, right? I assume a lot of you have been there. They have princesses, haunted houses, ice cream, roller coasters. I mean, it's a kind of a perfect place for kids. I've taken my kids there twice, and it was perfect. Perfect vacation. Well, the second time it wasn't perfect. There was a small hiccup. You should definitely not have three hot dogs and a slushie before going on Space Mountain. It can end very badly, and it did. But that really wasn't Disney's fault. I take responsibility there. Now, I know what you're wondering. One, where did he get his pink shirt? It's pretty cool. And two, why am I spending a minute and a half of my three minutes talking about Disney World? Well, this is where I can pull it all together for you. I came tonight to share a friendly recommendation, to ask for a bit more formal guidance when it comes to how often our athletic teams head off to school-sponsored out-of-state competitions and extensions to those trips that sometimes cause students to miss a week or more of in-class instruction. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm all about competition. I was a competitive athlete as a kid and in college, and I appreciate the team bonding and the sense of pride that goes along with it. I totally am down with the occasional out-of-state trip to Florida or wherever they go. And I also want to assure you that I'm not the fun police, although my children often say that I am. The reason that I'm here, though, is to say, look, we need to find a balance. One that can keep athletics, to round out the student experience, but also without competing with academic time in the classroom. I would like to keep things consistent across all the programs and reduce missed in-class learning and make things a little easier for family budgets. So what am I asking? I think it might make sense for the district to set a limit on the frequency for these big out-of-state competitions to either every two years or every four years. Now, the basketball team, I think, already does it about every four years, and I'm not sure about the other teams. But that, to me, makes a lot of sense. The team goes to Florida, they don't miss any school at all, they do it over Christmas break. They seem to do it in a pretty smart way. So in closing, as much as I love Disney World, it may make some smart sense to establish guidelines so that these sports trips focus on the athletic competition itself, A, and then, B, do not extend into long vacations that take teams out of classrooms for longer than necessary. This compromise would keep the excitement and the fun of the competitions intact and yet keep teams and kids in the classroom longer, as long as they possibly can. If there's one thing I think that we can agree on is that every single day of instruction time counts. Thank you for your time and attention, and go Sabres.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Sapersky, seconded by Mrs. Yang. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. School Board Calendar: Regular Board of Education meeting, Wednesday, December 3rd, 2025, at the ECC at 6:00. CIRC Building Ribbon Cutting Ceremony, Thursday, December 4th, at the ECC, or the new ECC Recreation Center at 10:00. Board Policy Committee meeting, Tuesday, December 16th, at 1:00. Regular Board of Education meeting, Wednesday, January 14th, 2026, at the ECC at 6:00. And on March 4th, the board meeting will be changed to a board retreat.
Question? So was there any discussion among board members regarding the change to retreat?
There is a discussion at our August retreat that we would like to have a retreat in the spring, and then discussion, you know, of how to do that. And we chose that date so that it would already be on your calendar, given that we had such trouble finding a date in the summer, to have our retreat in the summer. We chose a date that we already all had on our calendar.
I don't think now is the proper time for me to hopefully discuss that, discuss that. But thank you for the information.
All right, moving on. District Administrator Update. Dr. Bennet, please.
All right, good evening. Welcome. We have seven students with us tonight, I've counted. We've had students with us throughout the last couple of months, and I know there's been some board members asking, like, are they just really that interested in board meetings? And yes, I'm sure they are. Like Rite Cream, like, you're really interested in board meetings? But it's part of one of their courses at the high school to come see a board meeting, and they've chose to come to school board meeting, so it's fun. I probably...
Some have gone to the city council, some have gone to the library, but this is a popular one.
Any type of board meeting, right, to see that? That's excellent. So we have had quite a few here. So thank you and welcome to all of our students back there. I saw you studiously taking notes. So I'm really excited to hear about how that comes out in the classroom. Keep it up. All right, a couple updates to items coming up this week, and then we're really just going to spend a moment to pause and show gratitude for our veterans and the activities that took place today and this week throughout the district. But before that, tomorrow is the groundbreaking at the high school for the construction work, demolition, renovation, addition, that is coming from the referendum. So hopefully, third time's a charm on this reschedule, but it's looking like nice sunny weather. We did have to reschedule from Monday and earlier this year, so looking forward to that. It's at the high school, 10:00 a.m. on the north side of the property, near the football field. And in addition, this weekend, we opened the school play, which is called "Front." The opening night is Thursday evening. It runs through Sunday. We have about 50 students that are either in the show, helping with directing, lighting, sets, a variety of different experiences that they gain through that opportunity. So that starts Thursday night through the weekend. Then I'm going to ask Jess to hit play on the slide deck. It's just going to kind of play in the background. If you're a visual learner, there you go. But I'll talk a little bit, too, about what's been going on in the district. Obviously, today is Veterans Day. As you look at this pictorial journey, it's going to show just a little bit of the recognitions or gratitude that our schools showed across the district. We said, let's think about how we can show some gratitude, and we let schools have the idea and the power to do that however they wanted, and it's been really quite amazing to see that. So I'd like to first share my gratitude on behalf of the district for our staff that have been veterans, for our families who have members that are veterans or serving now or will serve. As President Eisenhower shared, at the time when Veterans Day was officially created, that it's to pay appropriate homage to the veterans of all its wars who have contributed so much to the preservation of this nation. On that day, let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of all of those who fought so valiantly on the seas and the air and on foreign and domestic shores to preserve our heritage of freedom, and let us re-consecrate, I say that word, struggle, ourselves to the task of promoting and enduring peace so that their efforts shall not have been in vain. This morning, Principal Volo sent a message to his staff. I asked to borrow his words because I thought he wrote it very well, but he said the theme around Veterans Day this year is service to our nation. United under one flag, each one of the estimated 18 million veterans living among us sacrificed something in order to serve. Their service allows us to all enjoy the freedoms that we have. We simply would not be able to exercise the freedoms we have if not for those who have dedicated themselves to serving our country. Thank you to those who served, are serving, or will serve, and we are here today to be able to honor your service in and every day. So as you see through some of our pictures, the high school did a wonderful breakfast this morning for veterans, invited through the local Legions and Lions, in addition to any family members that students invited. George Linsky, one of our students, really wanted to take a lead in this and did a wonderful job leading this event. At Forest Park, 7th grade really focused on learning about Veterans Day and writing letters to veterans in the VA Hospital in Wauwautosa. At Ben Franklin, if you drove by or stopped by, they did a honored Veterans Flag display. So any family members that students submitted that were in the military or currently serving or will serve, they have a flag with their name. It leads the walkway into Ben Franklin. Countrydale PV, Pleasant View, sorry, and Robinwood, all were similar in that they reached out to families to learn about veterans that are in their school family, put together bulletin boards in the hallway recognizing those, held assemblies, most of those at the end of the day-to-day, inviting in veterans, learning more about the holiday, listening to those veterans. At Pleasant View, throughout the week, they have a variety of veterans coming in and reading to students, sharing their story, really interacting. So it's been a great live learning experience from veterans in our area. In Southwood Glen, it created crafts and wrote letters that will also be distributed to local veterans. So excited to, I don't know if excited is the right word, honored to be able to show that there's been so much student and staff involvement in creating a way to show gratitude and especially recognize families in our community and other community members. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, School Board Liaison Reports. Max Su, please.
So I went to the Southwood Glen PTA meeting, which was very informative. They had a very good presentation about the budget transparency, about each and every, how each and every dollar is spent, and they had a few requests from the PTA. The students were doing a presentation about some playgrounds, some small toys, but it was very informative and a very beautiful experience to see how the school and the PTA, the parents together are coming together as a community as such.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Excuse me. I attended virtually the SWSA meeting today. Again, like most months, very heavily legislative-focused, just on how we can best work together to, you know, meet some legislative kind of goals. And once I get those minutes, I'll send those out to the whole board. It just happened this morning, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I did attend the Resolutions Meeting for the Delegate Assembly, in which we, the committee, which I impart this year, statewide committee brought forth, will be bringing forth 12 resolutions for vote at the Delegate Assembly. And the next day, on Saturday, was the Fall Legislative Conference. And I was part of a panel at that as well to talk about legislative advocacy. Representative Kitchens and Senator Pfaff also spoke, and many superintendents. So we talked a lot about the budget and government advocacy and how we can help move the state forward in education. Anybody else?
All right, School and Community Engagement Reports. All right, Reports, Presentations, and Other Board Business. New Courses. Dr. Bennet, please.
Sure. So Ms. Pound was with us and Ms. Jewell last meeting to talk through the new courses, which are the first agenda item, and then also the second agenda item, which is the Social Studies Pathway update. So just taking any additional questions you may have tonight. Otherwise, the recommended action is listed in the board agenda.
I move that we approve the Appounding 3, Calculus 3, Ceramics 3, Modern Band, Photography 3, and Video Game Design courses for the '26-'27 school year, and I will... Should we do the pathway separately?
You could do pathway separate, yeah.
All right. So I move we approve the courses as presented by Mrs. Pound.
Second.
All right, Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Sapersky. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Social Studies Pathway.
I would say first I would do the second motion and the first item.
I also recommend, or move that we approve the updated English, Computer Science, and Music Department pathways, reflecting the addition of those courses.
I'll second.
All right, Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Yang. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. And Social Studies Pathway.
I move that we approve the Social Studies Department Scope and Sequence Pathway, reflecting the additions of the pre-AP World History, AP World History, Modern Introduction to Law, Early Empires and Myths, Movies, and Museums, beginning in the '26-'27 school year, as presented last week.
I'll second.
All right, Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Sapersky. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. '26-'27 and '27-'28 School Calendar. Dr. Bennet, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Lankor was going to be with us tonight, but unfortunately, she's feeling ill, so we excused her. So I'm here to represent the calendar item that's in the agenda. As you've probably been waiting on the edge of your seat, we've talked a few times about how they're going to look a little bit different because of the construction work taking place at the high school, maximizing the amount of time that C.D. Smith and its team has on the property to safely work without our staff and students present. And we also are, in this packet, bringing two years of calendar. I would suggest we keep doing that. It helps to just have two calendars out there. So you're looking at the '26-'27 and '27-'28 calendars to kind of summarize the differences you're seeing from years prior. '26-'27, we're looking at starting Monday, August 24th, with students, and, which is obviously earlier. It's before Labor Day, which we had to apply to start before September 1st with DPI that was approved. So it's moving that up. It also gives us then our last day of school being Friday, May 28th, which is the Friday before Memorial Day with that half day. So it really just kind of shifts the whole year about a week and a half. When you look at the PD days, we still have six professional development days. Those have been well utilized, great feedback within the district. So those also shifted up about a week or a week and a half when you look at the calendar, because we always align those with when do we have assessment results or when do quarters end. So that's why those shifted, shifted with the calendar in that year. Our spring break in both calendars, you'll see aligns with an agreement upon, like, our CISA 1 school districts, to always be running that full last week of March, and then kind of dependent on where Easter falls within that. '27-'28, you will see that we are trying to kind of pull along summer, that summer, too. So we're looking at, starting on a Friday, the 3rd, with 6th and 9th grade. So we've started with 6th and 9th grade this year already, so that's not new. What would be different in this year is that we've been looking at and studying Great Start Conferences. So what we'd be looking at in the '27-'28 year is that K5 wouldn't come on that Friday, the 3rd, either. It would just be 6th and 9th grade, and then we'll work over the next year and a half to look at what a Great Start Conferences look like for elementary level. It's usually just ability to bring families in, to meet teachers ahead of time. So we will have, we'll work through that in time, but that's what's a little bit different about the '27-'28 school year. That year ends on June 9th with a full day for students, and then teachers back for a workday on Monday to meet the contractual days. So both calendars meet the instructional minutes required by DPI, meet our contractual days that we have, that you approve as a board with our teachers. I think that's the high-level summaries that are a little bit different in these calendars.
All right, questions? Angie, please.
This is more of a comment that I have, you know, I've heard from the students in my life. The, there's much unhappiness about the fact that school will start a year, a year, a week earlier at the end of this coming summer. And so I just want to reiterate that school will also let out a week earlier at the back end. It doesn't, it won't feel good at that moment in time. But can you just, again, reiterate what the significance and the importance of having those full three months of work, safety and project-wise?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I think, I would agree, right? It's going to feel a little different to come back in August, but it'll probably feel pretty exhilarating, also at the end of May, when friends and neighboring districts are probably still going to school into June. The reason for those dates is it's giving us, in the summer of '27, we've talked for probably the last eight months about how it's our really busy summer. So '27, that gives us June, July, August, without students or staff, or very limited presence at the high school in particular, so that we can be doing the construction that's going on to the north side of the building. We'll be finishing up, but then also be working towards that middle aspect of what's being renovated within the existing high school. So some of that in the next presentation, or our next part on the Franklin Forward Update, will really start to see what are those timelines. Phil's here with C.D. Smith. He'll be able to talk to us about the heavy work that will be going on that summer that really necessitates needing more time and why it's safer, right, to not have students in sight.
I just think after, like, yesterday, when having students in school at the same time as construction is a tricky thing at baseline, even when you're doing relatively light construction, as evidenced by the whole gas leak. So to have students away from heavy construction to accomplish this construction project in the safest way possible, it makes sense what you've presented.
Well, I'll just reiterate for our students that it's the same, it's the same amount of time, and the classroom is just shifted. So I know it'll feel different, but it hasn't extended the amount of days that we're all present during the school year and participating. It just shifts it. So it'll feel different. I agree. But I think for safety-wise, it would be good. The one other thing I want to make sure I really pointed out was that on the '27-'28 calendar, June 9th, that last day, cross out where it says half-day. We'll have that corrected for December 3rd when you take action. That's actually a full day on the last day of school that year to work through the calendar. Yep, we're not going to bring students back for a half-day on Monday, June 9th, but we will have staff.
Linda, please.
So it does make for a short summer, construction-wise, though also this year, but that must fit with your...
Yeah, we'll see a lot of how that phases together in the Franklin Forward Update tonight.
Rather than be consistent, you just kind of, depending on how it came together.
We put it...
Short time now, longer time later.
How the construction pieces together. Yeah, we've talked a lot about the complexity of that. Like I said, we'll get to it in the next agenda item, but working north to south is a complex project at the high school. So the items taking place now, as you can see, can take place with students here because it's on open property.
Very separate, okay.
Yep, and then it phases us to get to that point for the summer of '27.
And then this, this new element for the start of the school year, in the next school year, this, what'd you call it?
Great start.
We'll hear more about that.
Yep, we'll work on talking about that with staff and developing it. It's an idea to be talked about and looked at, and gives us potential in that year to do it. So we didn't want to not speak of it, but we'll be studying that internally to see what that can look like and how that can work.
So, and you're proposing these two-year approvals, so we won't see another calendar till, like, a year out? Or how do you see that?
We can, I would say, two years out, but we could do it a year out and just keep adding a year.
So we do the one we saw, then add one more.
But add one more.
So we will see a calendar every year?
If that's what we want as a board, we can definitely do that.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Then it kind of keeps it a two-year rolling.
Right.
That makes sense.
Two-year rolling, as opposed to just every two years. Okay.
I think it's appreciated by families because we already have a few people reaching out asking for next year's calendar.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, Franklin Forward Update. Dr. Bennet, Mr. Hacker, Mr. Kent.
Mr. Ken.
Phil. Mr. Cack.
So as everybody gets settled in, and Jess will get the slideshow up for us, it's a really exciting opportunity to be here tonight. Obviously, it's number six since the passing of the referendum just over a year ago. So there's going to be some things that may sound repetitive of what you've heard before or slight adjustments to it, but I think that shows the hard work of the team to continue to build on the progress of the work and continue to build on what we know in the design. We've definitely spent a lot of time at the design table, a lot, right? We've iterated and iterated again to make sure that we're best producing space for staff and students. We've been able, and we'll talk more through the slideshow, to bring items of this back to staff, to get feedback along the way, to bring back into the design process, to talk about the how and why of what's taking place. So it's, it's really been, I feel, a very collaborative experience. I would hope you get that, talking to people also. But tonight's exciting because we're here and we have images and a walkthrough of what Franklin High School will be with the addition and the renovation, and it's a first time to see that. So this is the official layout. All of our team is here to talk about it, kind of narrate over what we're watching. So we'll have a lot of video to watch while we listen, ask any questions we have, and then from here, we're going to roll this out, obviously, to our staff through the Franklin Find. That goes out this week on Thursday, and then start to get it up on our website and have regular updates on that Franklin Forward site that we created, I don't know, probably two years ago when we started talking at this table about where are we at, what's our plan, and what are our stages of work ahead of us. So I think we know everybody at the table, but if everybody wants to do introductions for anybody new in the room, especially our students learning about who you are and what you do.
Start my side.
Yeah.
Phil Jaskowski, Senior Project Manager with C.D. Smith.
I'm Michael Hacker with Cadence Consulting. I'm the district's owners rep.
My name's Devin Cack, Partner and Designer at PRI.
And I'm Nick Kent, also a Partner at PRI and Architect.
So thank you all for being here tonight, and we've been here quite often. We'll all add voice a little bit throughout the update this evening. I think we'll get through it, and then take any questions at the end might be the easiest, because otherwise we might start repeating ourselves. But if something's burning, we can obviously pause and adjust. So I'm going to try to use the clicker, Jess?
Yes.
All right. We saw this slide bouncing around green for a long time.
Yeah.
So we added two arrows to blue because it was really exciting, and that's how you animate excitement in PowerPoint. But basically, we're saying that because you have the video tonight means we got through the design process and we've adjusted it, and we could come and bring forward a celebration of that this evening. So it is exciting, even though it's just a graphic. Means that we've started some of the, putting together the bid packages, starting to look at how all those pieces are coming together. Obviously, you see some of that, the high school taking place. We'll see it tomorrow. We did introductions, so nobody's a stranger in the room this evening. So our agenda for the night, I know it's small writing, but it's really just, we're going to walk through the space, and then we're going to look at the construction timeline, talk about any adjustments, answer any questions about the long summer of '27, how some of this plays out with students in session, students out of session, and then Andy will give us a budget update of where we're at. So a couple of the images, and anybody at the table can jump in at any point. So a couple of the images and anybody at the table can jump in at any point. But we are going to have a video in a minute. As I stated, the images are helpful in that it kind of gives us the lay of the land of what is the finished project going to look like? So right now we're looking at the far kind of top of the screen, obviously the existing high school. Everything, what I would say closest to us right by feel is the newest additions and renovations that are taking place. So we're kind of looking aerial above the concession stand at Sullivan Field.
So what you're seeing, we're going to go through a few stills and then as Dr. Bennett mentioned, we'll get to the, the animation. And I'm sure I'll be brief in the thirteen minutes that will take to watch it. But as mentioned before, now we're on the, the far south side of the site. So we're seeing our tennis courts, our tennis pavilion, our, our additional parking lot to accommodate those functions that are happening here on the site. In the foreground, we're seeing our, our tree line buffer as well as our retention area to make sure that we're treating the site appropriately and according to codes with stormwater retention. Off in the distance on the right-hand side, the tan box, that's the, the gym. That's our gymnasium features there as well as adjacent to that. Just to the left is our autos bay. So we're real excited to show you an interior shot of that. And then in the middle, we're going to walk through that east corridor. We're going to see some, the, the CNA lab come finally onsite here at the high school and some of our other improvements there. So in this slide, we jump back. This is Sullivan Stadium. So just think if this was the backdrop to one of our, our recent playoff games. You're seeing the pool or the natatorium envelope on the right-hand side. And then truly really a, a big statement piece to the physical education athletics that are, that are here on site with multipurpose and dance room with our gymnasium beyond.
It's kind of neat to add a face to another side of our building too. So I think that's a neat part of this project that's taking place at the high schools. We have our main entrance that remains. You're going to see, as Devin said, some of the other entrances on the front side, but now you have this north side drop and then on the back where the autos is, right? You're starting to activate more space to the building. Main, main drop-offs and things, right, stay the same, but we're just activating other spaces for, for our students throughout the day.
Now we're stepping over to the, the front of the building. So this is, the view is it will look from fifty-first street. So really, everybody that can join us for the groundbreaking tomorrow, we're going to be right here on the left-hand side. That's where Phil and the C.D. Smith team have us assembled. On, on the, the right-hand side of this image, that's our main entrance for the Sabre Innovation and Athletics addition to the building, welcoming everybody in to this generous Victory Plaza as we've kind of been calling it. And on the left-hand side was the, the natatorium entry. Also to be celebrated with a walking track that can be used by community members up above. Go ahead and go to the next image and let's jump into this, this video. Again, it's, it's thirteen minutes. The, the, there's no narration to the actual video, at least not, not currently planned. But there is a nice, nice tunes that go with it. So, so walking, walking in from fifty-first street, right, we've just been dropped off. Maybe, maybe we're a student or a grandparent coming in to see our, our son or daughter's projects in tech ed or maybe an athletic event. Secure entry. Security is important no matter where we are on the campus. Walking in, we are immediately greeted with a community room, space for meetings with students and business leaders, perhaps like some of the ones that were just recognized here tonight. Stepping into the Innovation Commons, we are lined with new and supported opportunities on two floors. Here on the right, you're seeing brand-new culinary arts lab, right? Moving on from the original FCS room that we have today, properly supporting instruction for students in potential culinary exploration. On the left-hand side, we'll go into some of the spaces for metals and construction. But we also have our standard, our FCS or more residential style area on the, on the right. And rounding out here, we're looking at a business classroom. And then we begin to look at some of our differentiated learning environments for all individuals, but also for those that are neurodiverse. So we have smaller rooms that can be utilized for students to provide additional support for small groups or, or some one-on-one instruction. Stepping into the construction lab, we just went by the courtyard immediately behind us. We have direct tie and connection. What's great about these spaces and how they link, how they're adaptable, how they're flexible, right? We just went from autos to construction. The reason for that layout was because of direct conversations with those staff members in the same room at the same time. What if we moved a garage door here? What if we repositioned a wall over here? How can we make this better utilized for both programs? This is that east corridor. This is now, we're stepping into the existing woods classroom. You're seeing enhanced access and visibility out to our courtyard space where we have our brand-new greenhouse. And now stepping into the existing classroom spaces between woods and metals to see our hydroponic lab. We have support spaces for the greenhouse immediately on the right-hand side of this. And then we're partnering up with our, our second environmental sciences lab. So now we've just stepped upstairs. We're on the first floor, the same floor as the main entrance. This is that east corridor. So we're walking by the CNA lab. We're languages on the left. Those classroom spaces that currently support math have been transformed to in, include a breakout space with small group or conference rooms to best support all learners within the building. Again, conversations that we had, how do we, how do we gain and attain more collaborative space? How do we have those small group instruction spaces? How do I as a teacher also have a window to the exterior? So these are all things that we heard and were able to, through an iterative process, be able to include and incorporate into the, into the design. Right now, we're walking through math. You're seeing similar concepts to what's in the building right now as well as what's at Forest Park Middle School. Again, additional opportunities creating those collaborative areas in passive and active supervision of them with visibility out. Here, you're getting a little overlook to the greenhouse beyond and perhaps to some construction projects below. So existing building is all to the left and what we're in right now is all new construction. This space right here past these doors was really exciting actually for a number of the different staff that we met with. A nice breakout space. Kids want to get up and move around. How do we get them to a different space to engage in small group? So again, now we're on the second floor of the Innovation Commons. Walking by our interior design class, great conversation with this staff member. She pushed us. How can it be more flexible? How can it be even more creative? And that was an amazing conversation to increase the mobility, adaptability of that space. Again, additional opportunities for students with our, the small group or conference rooms that dot create ID eight design. Different words that we've used throughout our process. Ample daylight through clear story elements which allow natural daylight to also penetrate down to the, the lower level. Tech innovation is here on the left-hand side across from computer science and other business classrooms. Here we get a look down into our, our woods lab. Again, a big point of this project is to ensure that students get to see and experience, whether they're in the class or not, all of the amazing CTE spaces and opportunities for hands-on, project-based learning that are available at Franklin High School and throughout the district. Here we're stepping downstairs.
This is kind of that hallway you entered through too. You've done a loop if you've kind of followed it.
Yeah.
Back into our wayfinding.
Stepping into the, the woods lab, you can see the connection out to the Innovation Commons. We see that Innovation Commons is an area for community events, for, for, for dedications and for other, other opportunities for students to collaborate, for projects to be on display, for new and emerging technologies to be discussed and, and thought through. So here, who knows, maybe this is a car or a high-mileage vehicle that some students here at the high school have built. So all of this was made possible by the, the conversations that we had with world language, special ed, child development, science, math, interior design, business, computer science, environmental science, face, autos, woods, construction, pool. From a FI ed standpoint as well, tech innovation, food service, the AD, biomedical engineering, police, fire, many, many, many more. We've just stepped into the, the main student commons. So when we come in those front doors, instead of going straight ahead, if you move immediately to your left, this is the, the promenade that would welcome you to all of the physical education spaces. Here we've just stepped into the fitness room. Cardio is above us actually. We want to make sure that this is a very inclusive environment for anybody, no matter what their fitness level might be. So there's different opportunities for students to engage in, in that type of environment. Right here, we're going by a, a servery and distributed dining. We're making sure that we're honoring the past with our wall of fame, our plaques and trophies. And now we're stepping into our competition gymnasium. You'll see it's set up for, coincidentally, both basketball and volleyball at the same time, just so you can see the opportunities. But other, other opportunities included there as well. We have the spotlight above for wrestling to come down so that we can, we can truly honor all of the different activities and athletics. That's the, that's the competition, or that's the, the field house with hundred meter, hundred and sixty meter track. We've spent a lot of time discussing what are the opportunities, what can we do different with the locker room areas? So still providing private changing areas, but just the level of storage that's actually needed within a high school of today's, today's size and time. Off to the left, not only the, the training room, but this will also be used as a classroom space, directly connecting off to the weight room as we think about how our students might participate in that activity or who might need support. In the background of the weight room above us, that's the walking track. So we're going to go there in a little bit here, but just after we go into the multipurpose and wrestling space. So two generously sized overhead garage doors link these two spaces to lead to the adaptability of them. We've just stepped into the, the pool lobby or natatorium lobby, that secondary entrance. Again, you'll see some display and stuff like that on the right-hand side, some other more casual areas for our parents maybe to sit and wait outside of the humid pool environment. Off to the right-hand side, we have paired-up classrooms that again are, are adaptable for different uses during the school day or after. So sorry, we're kind of, we're running back and forth between some spaces. We're now approaching the multipurpose and, and dance area. So our, our gymnasium is off to the right-hand side. And now you're on the, the inside of that Sabre graphic that makes a punctuation on Sullivan Field and Stadium. Now we've just stepped into one of the pool locker rooms and we're about to step out into the new natatorium. So looking directly west, we're real sensitive to daylight in, in this area while still creating visual interest. So I think we knocked this one right, a, a home run right away on the, on the pool here after, after many iterations and, and conversation to make sure that we get this right for, for your community. Here we're seating, seating for over four hundred and fifty, I think even maybe closer, a little closer to five hundred. We've got a kind of a front row seat for, for parents and community members that might be here for perhaps a swim lesson when, right, not in use for, for competition or physical education. Again, we're on the first floor. So again, the, the main floor where the main high school is. And we are just stepping off to the left-hand side, following along with the theme of flexible spaces. We've got the potential to top-load our bleachers. So who knows what the future might hold or how we're using the spaces differently? If we have the opportunity to plan for these things, why don't we go ahead and grasp that opportunity? Daylight is provided to each of the gym spaces and to as many spaces as absolutely possible. Daylight is a crucial element for, for teaching and learning and, and also for student success through studies. We are on the walking track right now, which is an organizing wayfinding element around the weight room and the cardio as well as our wellness studio. And it also provides some pre and post function for concessions for the natatorium as well as for our neurodiverse students with different offshoot areas where small activities can occur with a little more privacy. So again, cardio overlooking the fitness, very intentional. And again, you're actually seeing all the way through outside. So the idea of daylight coming into the building, right, it won't actually, but just the ability to see the treetops and see the sunset will, will really assist with everybody that's in the building from sunup to sundown in our winter months where we're at right now. So we've kind of just done a whole, a whole three sixty again, just immediately to the right. That's our natatorium entrance and the natatorium lobby below. So we are now walking on that track. Here's one of those little offshoot areas that can be utilized. And now we're looking out on fifty-first street in the background with Victory Plaza down below, multipurpose and wrestling to our left.
A lot of this space will be good too for our students with special needs to have area to get out and walk and be in general population. That wellness studio that we walked through also will be used for some of the OT needs of our students or be a more private studio for their physical education classes when it's not maybe optimal to be in a larger gymnasium or bigger space.
Our activities and athletics office is prominently featured as another kind of administrative position here in the, the new addition and make sure that there's coverage on that end of the building. And then you also saw some elements of reclaimed wood gym floor. So we're bringing some of the history that has been so thoughtfully celebrated over the years along with us for the, the new addition. So if you'll click to the next slide, so there's, there, right, there's, there's still a couple of spaces that we, we didn't, we didn't actually see. That will, we're going to see how we incorporate these into with some, some kind of splice outs to make sure that we are including all the spaces that community supported, right? Our special education is one of those, I mentioned those neurodiverse spaces as we were walking through. But we don't want to lose sight of our life skills classrooms. We actually have two of them. This one features a little kitchenette and the next one features washer and dryer, some more home amenities. There's going to be perhaps a bed in the foreground. Let's make sure that students understand and can manage themselves as they're growing and, and becoming.
Life skills?
Yeah, yeah. So next slide is then, again, just another space, the health CNA lab. We're real excited to bring this back to, back to the, or to the high school for the first time, excuse me. It's never been here, so very excited.
We can pause there if there's any questions from the video. Thirteen minutes seem long until you have to try to narrow it through.
Yeah, that was, that was a lot.
It felt really fast. I can't watch moving things, so I got a little sick.
What in regards to the project?
I, I do think.
In regards to the project, I couldn't take my eyes away even though I was getting sick to my stomach.
I, I do think, right, it's a long video, but we'll be able to break it up into different chunks so people could see, okay, I want to see FI ed and athletics. I want to see CTE spaces. I want to see what our core academic areas perhaps can also be chopped up. So I think it would be great.
I'm really unclear on where that walking track is. Is it in one gym space or is it taking you through all of them?
It's outside looping around the weight room, the cardio space. So it's, it's looping around that whole first floor area. So above the weight room, above the wrestling room.
Not like around the field house, like.
No, you, you can completely compartmentalize it outside of the, the core academic areas. So all of CTE could be closed down and it could be utilized.
There, there is also a track in the field house though.
Other, oh, that's a prepared to track.
So what, what we're doing is, well, we call it a walking track. It's really, it's a corridor, but we've put some lines on the bottom so it can be multipurpose. Yeah, and then we can have it as a community asset to give them a, a proper place. And then we know where all of our community friends are in the building.
Okay, and then how do the, what's the autos access? How do they get back to that space?
So they would, they would actually come around the building, so around the Sabre Center, and then descend a, a hill that's there right now. So if you know where the greenhouse is in the back right now, basically, yeah, currently, that, that will basically become a, a sloped driveway to the back of the field house. It provides access to autos and all their, their garage spaces, but also for fire and emergency personnel as a requirement for code.
And I'm not real clear on that, that green space with the greenhouse. I mean, you kind of, you saw it, but what, what do you see, how that's utilized and changes from what's there now?
That's, I'll speak to that because it's, to me, it's like one of the most exciting spaces because it was in our vision. We were able to do it in the works. So that's the existing courtyard, but it's actually activating it. So the courtyard, I think, when it was originally put in, great idea to have windows and get natural light in those classrooms, which is really important, but now we're taking the existing courtyard and we're activating it. So when you saw the hydroponics lab and those science rooms that are going to be in what is now the woods and metals lab. So when you saw the hydroponics lab and those science rooms that are going to be in what is now the woods and metals lab, there is going to be a door where you can walk out there. So you can go right to grabbing your coat and walk out to the greenhouse and do your work in there to tidy your learning. And then also where Devin had talked about, the overhead doors coming out of the woods lab, that's crossing that hallway and there's another overhead door out into the courtyard. So the hope is that we're also building spaces out there, practice building pergolas or practice putting a wall up, different projects that construction can be doing outside in that space. So really activating, activating it and making a learning space, but it's the existing courtyard now. Where you saw the math classrooms, there's windows put in there instead of a solid wall so that it's bringing in more natural light. But there was a lot of purposefulness to the study and our work too of creating ability to not only get the natural light in, but for students to look in and see what other peers are doing and to learn a little bit about the CTE class that might be taking pace, place. Or there's a greenhouse, like what class gets me into that greenhouse? So activating a lot of that to be able to just see what our peers are doing and learn more about what's offered.
And were adding math classes to that area of the school? I guess I wasn't.
We're really relocating. There's areas that were part of the renovation scope that were included. So world language is now being unified. And to do that, we have to displace the math that's there existing.
And that space we didn't see in this video?
We did walk through math and then world language, that was the east corridor. So when we got to see biomed on the right-hand side and then the health CNA lab on the right side as well, and then child development on the left-hand side. We didn't actually go into a world language classroom because they look fairly standard. There's not as many different things in them, so we didn't go in them. But yeah, we just, we walked down that corridor. So that east corridor really of the existing building, while it's existing and it will stay, it's going to be transformed into collaborative learning environment to match the other areas of the building. Part of it was rightsizing classrooms as well for that area.
And are you going to show us like the, like a floor print so we can see? I mean, walking through is one thing, but to see the map, is there going to be a map?
Sure, sure.
See a map here yet tonight?
We had that the last update, so that hasn't changed. This was more the walkthrough to see what it's like. We should have that in your binder or stuff from the last meeting, last update I should say.
I don't know if I can find it, so I appreciate a copy. You may have shown it in the PowerPoint, but I can't find it, so you provide that, appreciate it.
Thank you. Angie, please.
Just congratulations to you all. It's, this is a challenge to, it's been a challenge for any number of reasons, but it's been a challenge to think about how are we going to tick off all of the boxes of what needs to be accomplished to bring Franklin High School, you know, forward and to meet the needs of our huge population of students with their diverse interests. And you did it and it looks amazing and I couldn't be more proud. That's all.
Well, kudos to the district, right? We don't do this by any means alone. You know, as Dr. Bennett said earlier, we've been meeting a lot for a long time and it's a lot of really, really rich, good, productive conversation. And the multiple touches and input points from the staff truly form this work, right? So it's the old it takes a village to create something, this is truly, truly it. So this is a reflection of Franklin.
Yeah, and you know, we don't want to lose sight of the effort. There were surveys that went out to the community. We had students do videos and give audio. A number of you gave feedback and I know we presented on that a few months back on kind of your aspirations and the feedback we got. And again, those are all filters that the design team went through and budgeting we were going through using as feedback. We talked about what is the value of that, right? A lot of it felt soft and kind of big pictury. What you see on the screen is it, right? When we talk about transparency and a sense of community having pride in the building and seeing the reuse of that gym floor in ways. And that was all tied back to the feedback that was gathered throughout that process. So it's very exciting to see that and see it come together.
Mary, please.
So I know a hospital is now a school and I'm on the sign committee at our hospital, our wayfinding. And I just, I don't know if the signs are commensurate with what it's really going to look like, but as somebody who has wandered through various buildings, like where's this? Is it going to be so crystal clear as it seemed on the video about like, how do you get here and what's this? I love it if it's, that's how it's going to be, it's Saber Pride, you know?
We've, we've had one branding and wayfinding meeting so far, and there will be many more to make sure that everybody has a clear and enjoyable experience, whether it's their first or their hundredth through the building. Yeah, so we had a lot of graphics as placeholders and stuff like that and something that you don't see, right? When I'm walking through, I don't have Google glasses, so it doesn't tell me where I'm at. And that'd be maybe wonderful one day, but that's not today. We need to make sure that there's signage that's clearly visible and accessible for people to see, to understand, and then to follow. So we'll.
One of the things to build on that is, you know, this project really allowed the district the opportunity to reassess the entire building, even the portions that we're not touching and get everything reorganized again. Right, over time, things push and pull and it gets a little confusing to move through the building. It's very well organized now, it's very intuitive. That's been the goal. You see a lot of the glass and transparency as you're moving through the building, you have a kind of a feel on where you're at and why you're there. But as Devin noted, some continued work to come around how are we branding? What are we calling these areas, right? What's permanent and what changes over time, right? All the way down to the placards next to the room, right, that you're walking into. And so a lot more conversations to come around that, but it starts with the architecture, that's what you see tonight.
Maybe app on your phone?
That would be very cool. Why not, right? And the kids might be able to develop it. Yeah.
We have students, I can do that.
And then I just had one other. So as somebody who has spent a lot of hours squinting in the Saber Center as the sun just pours in, I love sunlight, I love this idea, but is there going to be, you know, ways to mitigate when the sun is just blasting in?
Oh, you answered that one.
Build in blinds, please tell us there's blind.
Yes, blinds are part of the solution. We've spent quite a bit of time particularly on the west face of the building, which we do have large areas of glass, very much like the Saber Center. The architecture is intended to be complimentary to the Saber Center. So we're not just adding yet another thing to this building, we're trying to unify it. So we're actually trying to, we will be employing some maybe more subtle and sophisticated ways as well to control the solar gain in the building. Some fairly advanced glazing techniques that we're using that you won't necessarily notice, but it does help control how much sun actually enters the building, reduce the glare and actually reduce the heating or cooling load on the building over time.
Thanks.
I would just echo everything everybody said, so yay.
I just appreciate, you know, we've, we've seen Nick and Devin and Mike here for a long time, ever since I've been on the board. You know, you guys were involved in the middle school build. And I've really appreciated speaking with you, your ideas, how you, how you really care about this project and the kids that are involved in Franklin. And Phil, C.D. Smith has been a great partner so far, so we look forward to continuing that. You know, I've heard a lot of good ideas around how kids will get involved, how kids will be involved in the build and even some possible internship opportunities for former Franklin students, you know, having students involved in the building. I've appreciated, I've gotten to be on a few of the trips, one to Marquette where we saw the different things. I just appreciate how different people look at this differently and have different questions, but everybody's thinking about moving forward and making this the best it can be. So, so thank you, everybody who's been involved in this, Jess and Andy and Annalee and everybody at this table and all the teachers, so thank you very much.
All right, a little budget overview that Andy put together.
Yep, so this will get uploaded into Board Docs, so we were just holding it through tonight. So this is through October. On the left, we have our revenues. That principal of 145 million will not change, that's our principal bond from the referendum. The interest earnings to date are about 2.85 million dollars. Again, we're estimating somewhere around 8.5 to 9 million dollars that we will get to keep. I've mentioned before, we'll enter into an arbitrage situation. Arbitrage is a term saying you've earned as much money as you possibly can. You have to pay the rest back to the federal government, which means we have to do some paperwork. But again, we've earned every red cent that we possibly can. We've also talked about earmarking an additional 6 million of that interest, again, of that about 8.5 to be used towards the project. So right now, on the right-hand side, our expenses, we're holding 151 million dollars for the budget. We see each of the schools, Ben Franklin, Countrydale, Pleasant View, Robinwood, Southwood Glen at the elementary level. Those are capital improvement projects, those will be run by Andy Daniels. Franklin High School is really a mix of a couple of CIP projects, most of it coming from C.D. Smith as part of the whole large addition and renovation. And then we'll have some soft costs that will go there. Soft costs are going to be furniture and fitness center equipment and soil testing and doing those types of things where we're going to hold the contracts specifically. What will end up happening as we go through this project is the Franklin High School, 126 million dollars, the soft cost of 8.6 million, that will have some fluctuation. In terms of which bucket, actually, everything will officially land in when it's all said and done. So for instance, Andy Daniels has some CIP money earmarked for flooring. C.D. Smith is also carrying money for flooring in the project. If it makes sense for C.D. Smith to manage the whole project because the price will be cheaper because of scale or something like that, we'll slide those dollars out of the CIP bucket, slide them into C.D. Smith's bucket. So that will have some fluctuation right up until everything is entirely done. So we've done three of, is it nine total bids we're doing or bid packs, something like that?
I guess we're six now, but then there's probably going to be additional for some of the CIP work that we're doing, so.
Okay, so we've done three of those so far. So we've bid out at least half of the project in terms of total bid packs, but we're probably 70% of the total project in terms of dollars. But again, some of those projects will slide just depending on where it's best use of the dollars for us to fit. In the bottom portion, you'll see it broken out by CIP Franklin High School, meaning C.D. Smith is managing that. And then again, our soft cost, our budget. And you'll notice the FHS C.D. Smith managing doesn't match the Franklin High School up top. Again, that's because the top part co-mingles capital improvement projects and the Franklin High School project where the bottom really separates that out between what is Andy Daniels managing and then what is being managed at C.D.'s level. And then again, that soft cost is really, that's between Mike and I and we're holding those contracts and managing those particular dollars so that that all makes sense. So we are clearly on track to earn the minimum of 6 million dollars to, again, cover what we're saying we're going to use in interest to make up the 145 to 151 gap. So not worried about that whatsoever. Yes, Linda?
Are you holding contingency funds?
We are holding contingency funds, so we had contingency in terms of project procurement because of the tariffs that were going on, so we were holding money for that. And we certainly have contingency funds for things like soil, so we haven't dug into the soil. And anytime you tear open an existing building, there's lots of potential issues. What will be really nice is outside of soil, there shouldn't be a whole lot of contingency need for the fieldhouse area, the weight room that, beginning innovation, because you're building brand new. So you're designing and building the whole thing without touching it. But once we start gutting the building, that has potential to have some hiccups. So we're holding anywhere from five to seven percent, depending on what the particular portion of the project is for contingency.
What's the dollar value of that?
It's probably somewhere around seven to nine million dollars in total of contingency.
So that could, I mean, best case scenario, that's not needed.
Best case scenario is it is not needed, 100%.
Yeah, and we're trying to be strategic, right? Different, as I think Andy was noting, different phases of the project carry more risk. And we think about contingency, it's really a tool to manage the risks, the surprises that come up. And certainly more risk in the soil, but as soon as we come out of the ground, a lot of that risk goes away. More risk renovating an old messy existing high school, right, than there is in building new right next to it, right? So as Andy was noting, we're trying to be strategic about not just what total dollar amount we have, but you know, for a project of this duration, we need to kind of stretch those resources a long time. And we're going to attempt to kind of, as we phase through different parts of the project, be able to release that contingency if applicable. So to your point, like if we get through the first phase one, which is a big chunk of the project and we didn't use a significant portion of that, the district has some decisions to make on what's, how best to reallocate those if at all. So trying to be strategic about the management of that as we go along.
But at this point in time, I'm hearing 8.5 million?
Somewhere in that region.
Which will be modified as you go through phases?
Correct.
And do we have additional building phases? Is there another timeline that shows different building phases?
Through the high school, yep, we're going to go into that next.
Okay.
Angie, please.
I don't know if this is the right time, but I was just thinking, Phil, since how has safety been going thus far? And from C.D. Smith's perspective in terms of being able to keep your work and your workers separate from students? How has traffic been on site? Can you give me a?
So we're setting up the site right now. So I think that's been the focus of the last month is actually establishing the site and kind of decoupling us from the school, which is kind of how we want to separate, where there's a clear construction site and there's a school. So there's a lot of coordination just as we, obviously, we need to install fences, the students are there. Just working with the school to make sure we're communicating what's happening and we kind of know where those lines are. So I think we're, right now, we're starting to kind of settle into that initial mobilization where we're decoupled and we're able to separate ourselves over the last month.
Yeah, we had a large safety meeting today to talk through communication strategies and plans, phasing, some of the soft start as we've seen with some of the demo also overlaid with closing out the football season and a lot of the movement on that into the site. So now that's concluded, so we can kind of fully secure that zone as construction only. But we went through a significant dialogue today on just how best to manage that and continue the communication string appropriately as we go forward.
And you said we've been through several bids already. How have those bids come in in terms of what we thought they might look like?
Yep, so we've had, in bid pack one, we had some good success, bid pack two, good success, bid pack three, came in over where we expected it. So right now, we're about 1.5 million dollars in the red. But what we do then is take a look at all of the things that we're trying to do in there. Are there, it's called value engineering, but are there places to change certain specifications? So I would like to talk way more in depth about the value engineering, but some of them, Phil brings in right away this aluminum thing I can.
Aluminum feeders for electricals.
Aluminum feeder for electricals, like.
When we talk about aluminum, it's quite a bit of saving. So there's a lot of those topics that, I mean, we call it value engineering, but I think we look at it more as design refinement, that we have the design and we can actually work with it of really what's the intent? How can we provide what's intended for the mechanical system specifically is where we see a lot of that. I don't see, those, I don't even want to say cost overruns, but just where everything's shaking out that we can refine and kind of ultimately have a path to where we need to get from a budget perspective, so.
What percent are we talking?
Still maintaining like the purpose of what we're trying to do with each particular space and making sure that gets. So some of it comes to like light design. So like, are these the exact lights we'd want in this room or do we change that a little bit to make that work? Because name whatever, for whatever reason, some of it, to Phil's point, is like behind the scenes, no one would ever see it in a wall connecting something that, again, still can, or keeps the total function of what we're trying to accomplish in that particular space.
And what percent does that represent of the, I don't know, big to big package?
Oh, 1.5.
60.
It's like, yeah, 0.6%, 0.7% of our total project. If we think about just the high school, it's like 1.2 or something like that of the whole piece. So again, C.D. Smith and PRA have significantly more experience than us and tell us at this point in time, like we're right on par with where we should be as we start to work through these. We've also hit the two most volatile bid packs, so, meaning they have the widest range of all the things that they go out and bid, the highest and lowest variations. So those are already in bid pack one, two and three, the two highest. The next three have significantly greater, I, control is probably the wrong word, but come in much tighter when you do go out and bid those in their experience. And so we have a much greater shot of nailing those spot on with where we want to be.
And are the packages by building phase or by the trades area? I mean, I don't, I have no idea.
It's by the discipline, so we've grouped, there's largely a civil group, a structured group, mechanical, logical. Yeah, so it's broken that as opposed to phasing. So it's not separate contractors on each phase.
I would say we even take it a little bit further. So mechanical might be broken down into rooftop units and then HVAC running, like the duct works and things like, so it is broken down into a lot of different phases, even though that's all grouped to make sure that we have the best chance. even though that's all grouped to make sure that we have the best chance of having contractors come in with their specialty and doing this particular work, rather than saying, we're going to group this all together and we're going to outsource the electrical component, we're going to outsource the HVAC component, even though we're going to put it all under our label. So Phil and his team have worked with PRA to break that out so that it's harder for groups to hide things in. So if someone were to build the entire building, it's a little bit easier to do that. But when you break it out, people really have to focus on that particular discipline and what that discipline costs and materials and labor and things like that.
All right, go ahead.
And then we will throw it over to C.D. Smith by looking at the milestone schedule. Phil, I don't know if you'll put some language, anything that's maybe slightly adjusted with a little bit of the pushback on time we had and it sounds like some interest in the 2027. We also have the phasing video, so it doesn't have music with it, if it's easier to talk over that.
I'll try, I'll try to do as good as Devin does. Not promising.
Sure, for you, Phil.
Devin timed his out perfectly, so.
No pressure.
All right, here's, so here's the existing, are we going? There we go. So existing, actually, not as we stand, since the pool is demoed, so let's say pre-start. So demo pool building, obviously, we mobilize there. Demolition is nearing completion for the pool and the classrooms. So once we get permits in hand from the city, we'll clear out the woods, work on the site, site prep, so establish hall roads, establish site delivery roads, really get ourselves established over the rest of this year once those permits are hand. We have a graphic showing construction traffic routing, so all deliveries are coming in to the farthest south, and that's an effort to keep ourselves separated from the students and traffic and buses on a daily basis so that we're decoupling ourselves from the students like we had hit on before. There's the fieldhouse construction, so this is what we're calling Phase One. So that's starting November, once we have permits in hand through June of twenty-seven. That speaks to the busy.
We're getting behind, Phil.
Yeah, I gotta go a little quicker. Science lab's in twenty-six. Fieldhouse, you can probably pause it, because this is probably good, this speaks to 2027.
It's, you can't keep up because 2027 is so important.
It's going to be so busy. So I think 2027, Fieldhouse, that Phase One addition will be turning over. So we'll be moving into that addition, moving people out of the next phase. And in addition, we'll be doing demolition, which is some of the higher-risk activities that we have. So that speaks to wanting to extend that summer. So we have as much time as possible with no students in the building as we perform those high-risk activities. So that would be demolishing essentially everything to the courtyard so that we can start building Phase Two from there. There you go, we're completely decoupled. And then June of twenty-seven through May of twenty-eight would be that Phase Two addition. So CTE spaces that we walked through, Family and Consumer Sciences. And then that last summer of twenty-eight, we would be essentially moving out and then finishing all the site works. So the tennis courts, putting permanent roads in, and really getting the site, switching it over from kind of that construction to kind of the permanent construction from there.
So when we paused and then we started again, so at the end of the summer of 2027, that middle hunk of the building has been demolished, and now you're building there. How will students get from one end of the building to the other when there's a major construction site in the middle?
So we will have, I think we've talked about some sort of a tunnel access that would be outside the site. Obviously, we can't have students moving within the site because we'll be building, but there would be some sort of access that would allow that movement from kind of the south half to the north half while we build. I think a little bit that there's some refinement with the school of exactly what that looks like to provide the students what they need. But we know it's something that needs to be completely developed so that, you know, we have that good student experience.
It would be like a designated hallway, like.
It would be like an outdoor hall.
Yeah, it would be like an outdoor hall, essentially sidewalks.
I'm picturing like when you do construction downtown Chicago and you end up like walking underneath the construction or whatever, like something along those lines.
Something similar to that, yep.
Cool, okay, thanks.
Thanks.
That was my question.
Other questions?
Questions, phasing. So we think that we're.
It's all bid though already, you're bidding it all right now. Even though that middle piece isn't coming up till year and a half, that's all being bid right now.
Yep, so it's phased, but it's looked at as kind of all one project.
Yeah, and there are multiple bid packages, just to be clear. I think the last planned bid packages right now are scheduled for right after the new year. So the team's still finalizing the last of the interior design components that go into the full set of drawings, and those last bid packages are just being finished up on the PRA and engineering side, and the team's prepping to get those on the street.
But is it safe to say that some of the final phases of construction have components that have been already bid out?
Yes.
Do we think we're going to, do we think even though we didn't start when we wanted to originally, that we're going to roughly finish when we?
Yeah, I mean, the biggest impact to kind of everything that's transpired is our intent was to mobilize, obviously, in summer, essentially set up the site prior to students being back, which would have been essentially a clean break. Site set up, students come back, it's basically ready to start construction. That didn't happen, so we're just having to manage it a little closer. As we get fencing out there, we mobilize, work starts, it's a little more mixed, full disclosure. So that's the biggest impact. As an overall duration, we're generally in the same spot that, in terms of additions and production work, where it was initially planned.
Yeah, the timeline we had up with the yellow bar or the gold bar across the top, Phase One A, which was demo pool, has always been sitting on October. It was really kind of a two or three-month stretch over the summer. We were hoping to be able to enable work. That didn't occur because of the approval process, so that has overlapped to Phil's point. But the demo pool phase and everything subsequently after has stayed as originally was intended. So fortunately, we've been able to maintain that.
Is your mobilization still dependent upon permits, you said?
So we can demolish the buildings right now. There's still a soil disturbance permit that we need from the city before we're actually excavating and removing soils. So there's still another step among a number of other permits that we're managing through. So it'd be a step process before we actually have everything in hand as we get.
I mean, talk about the slight behind the high school, that's all good to go? Nope, not waiting on anything?
We can only demol, right now, we can only demolish buildings.
Because we're waiting on.
A soil disturbance permit.
Connected all to our, no.
To the litigation, no, it's not connected to that, we're waiting on a soil permit.
And this litigation, where is that potentially impacting this timeline at all?
The litigation that's out there is for access on the road that'll be put in. As Phil said, at the end, they'll finalize that road. So it doesn't change any scope of the project, it just changes potentially in the end who can or cannot use that road. But the road is already approved to be in there as part of the site plan.
Is it fair to say that we're something to change in terms of who's able to use the road? The one thing that, and what you've shown us that could potentially change is the traffic pattern that you outlined for us. Is that accurate?
Most of our traffic pattern should remain the same.
Oh, really?
I think our intent would eventually, for personal vehicles, for construction traffic to enter through Highview. Once it's able, I think we're able to manage it entering from Fifty-first Street with the thought of just reducing total traffic load on the west side. So I think it's beneficial for that, but it's not something that we can manage our way through.
Thank you.
And as far as the litigation, since I was asked, the city has agreed to come to the table and try discussing it again. So we are meeting with them at noon on Thursday, the thirteenth this week.
Is there a court date, or is that still to be determined based?
Still to be determined, timelines for all of that. But we're meeting with them outside that court date, as you talked about the last meeting, to try to.
But there's not a date, it's sitting out there that we're all kind of.
No.
No.
Yeah.
Great, I just wanted to say thank you to the school board for having us here and being able to share the progress on this with you. Also, thanks to the administrative team. Their leadership, their poise, and their vision have really helped us organize this immense project. Mr. Hacker, you coming in and also helping organize and have us all rowing the boat in the same direction has really been invaluable to this overall process. I thank you, Phil, and your team's leadership on the construction side and walking us through this stuff. But again, back to the leadership, just the, we've had tough conversations over the last year. We've had a lot of conversations, we've had a lot of iterations. We have involved the right people coming into our conversations at the right time from various different avenues and areas within the high school or really throughout the district. And I just want to say thank you. I really have appreciated this, the project so far, and it's going to be amazing to see this thing grow from the ground up. And I can't wait to see staff and students utilizing these spaces for generations, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, team. See you tomorrow. Thanks, fellows, see you tomorrow.
All right, we'll move forward. Board policies, students, five thousands, Mrs. Sapursky, please.
Okay, we had yet another exciting policy meeting, some good discussion around all of these. I'm sure you've read them in detail, and we are bringing them for preliminary approval tonight. So I'm just looking for a motion for preliminary approval, or I'm making motion, preliminary approval of student five thousands of the policy manual.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Mrs. Sapursky, seconded by Dr. Beer, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. Tuition waiver, Dr. Bennett, please.
All right, all the information's in there. This is a family looking at an extension of a nine-week waiver. They're moving in in the next couple of weeks, but just beyond that first nine weeks.
Move to extend the attached tuition waiver for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented.
Second.
Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Sapursky, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. Treasurer's report is available in Board Doc's library. Future agenda items, Pleasant View, school presentation, Friends of Franklin, coherence plan, mid-year report and assessment report, Dr. Mo, sorry, Board Clerk's report, election notice, open enrollment seats, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight school calendar, financial audit report, board review of meeting feedback and action steps, Ben Franklin's school presentation, review and discussion of WASB proposed resolutions, twenty-five, twenty-six preliminary budget at a glance, board policies, property and technology, seven thousands, and operations, eight thousands, and district administrator self-evaluation of goals, mid-year discussion of administrative contracts, closed session. And I am looking for a.
I have a couple of questions on future agenda items.
Sure.
There was a correspondence with Mrs. Williams there about potentially discussing what happened at graduation. She suggested that the, the board should talk about it, and I'm also wondering about that correspondence with her. I'm not sure, I know there was somewhat of a hacked email, you had a hacked email address that came to a couple of us. I don't know if you were aware of that, or?
I did hear about that, yeah. I don't know what that has to do with the calendar, but the future.
It has to do with her correspondence, that you responded to in a very personal way. And I asked, so well, does that mean that we can all respond to her? And it came back, yes. I wasn't sure if that was you really saying that, or if that was the hacked email was saying that.
Again, this doesn't seem related to the calendar, but do you want to answer? Could we have this conversation outside of the meeting?
Well, I tried to have it outside of the meeting, but I never got an answer, and we're all at the board table right now. So I just, I would ask it right now.
All right, well, so the question, the question, as I understand it, is should we discuss, should we put an agenda item forward to talk about something that happened at graduation? I don't think it's, I haven't heard, I haven't heard a lot about that. I don't know if there's anything else to discuss.
I think I would call that above, below the line.
Well, something did occur, and I guess, how do we know it's not going to happen again? And then we have policy on this, this is a policy question regarding that, yes, of what students can do at graduation. Yes, there's policy on that.
So then at that point, it is not, it's up to the district to?
Enforce it, and it wasn't enforced, so.
Well, you don't know what hap, if there were any consequences. Again, this was a situation where we received one email, and have you investigated whether?
Yes, I've asked.
I see.
I mean, I, Mike responded on behalf of the board, but I don't think it answered any questions. And, and he said we could all respond to her individually. I believe that was your response to me. Is that, can I clarify that, that it's okay for all of us to respond individually to her statement? Because you did say yes to me, but I'm not sure if that was a hacked email or what. So that's why I'm asking you.
Okay, I don't, yeah, I don't, I think this is, I think we're getting into something that's, that's, that's not on the agenda. So I don't think we can.
And it's about a future agenda item.
Okay, well, I haven't heard anybody else that wants to, that wants to bring this up as an agenda item, but perhaps somebody else, perhaps somebody else does.
No.
Well, I do want an answer, though, on if it's okay for board members to respond individually to the email from Mrs. Lamser. I want an answer to that.
I did answer that question to you.
So it's okay?
Yes.
Even though we have a policy that says we should not be responding individually to?
So.
We have a policy on that, correct?
You do realize that the policies we've been preliminarily approving are not actually in effect yet. So we have approved a preliminary policy that when we review the full policy packet in February, as we've been discussing, then it will be.
It is right now, policy, that we don't respond?
It is not.
It's not, it's not in policy, maybe, maybe you're seeing a policy that I don't see, but no, that's not in policy. But it will be in policy when, that they've been approved, but they're not in.
Well, I'll look it up. I believe it is a policy that we're not supposed to be responding individually to citizens' email. You respond on behalf of us.
Yeah, well, if there's a policy, if there is a policy, please show it to me.
Anybody else, can anybody else recall that?
It's something we preliminarily approved in our new policy packet that is not currently in effect, as we've discussed.
I'll look it up, I'll look it up.
Thank you.
And I can respond then to Mrs. Lamser.
Please.
On my own. And I also have to bring up the fourth goal that I thought we had approved, that had asked Annalee to add to her.
That's, 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 that's something we're talking about in closed session, it is not, that's not appropriate.
Not part of our calendar discussion right now.
Well, how can I resolve then? How would you, where would you direct me to ask on what happened to this goal that was discussed? What is my pathway here to ask what happened to that?
I think it's been asked and answered via email.
I agree.
So there is no, there is no fourth goal.
But it's not part of this discussion right now.
So I'm just clear, so there's no fourth goal.
This is not part of this discussion right now.
This is not part of this discussion.
But that question was not answered in the email.
This is not an appropriate time to have that discussion.
Then please direct me to where I can get that question answered.
You asked it in an email.
And it was not answered, okay.
Linda, I answered your question about where that goal was added specifically. I emailed you back on that. This is not on the agenda, so it shouldn't be discussed right now. But because this is a board meeting and you're accusing me of not responding to you, we did respond.
I'm talking about Mike, I know that, talk about you.
I also responded to you.
But I responded to it, and it's been, you said that it wasn't responded to. So I'm speaking on behalf of what I responded to, and I did respond to you and tell you where it's changed in there. I even suggested looking at the printed copy you had from the meeting compared to what I updated with you and sent on Friday, because it has changed.
And Mary, you pointed it out to me, and I responded to her, to you specifically saying there are only three goals in your plan. There are only three goals.
This is beyond.
And you, I asked for a fourth.
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
Second, all in favor?
Motion was made by Mrs. Yank, seconded by Dr. Beer, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned at seven twenty-seven PM.